Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, February 4th, 2015 at 7:32. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar. Please rise.
Thank you and please rise. Let's bow our head and thank the Lord this evening for all the good things that we have each and every day. We pray for the ill and the frail in our city. We pray for world peace and tonight we give you praise and glory for your presence is felt in this wonderful city. We ask that you bless our city employees, some who are recognized for their hard labor and love for our community. We pray for our servicemen and women in their assignment to protect us. We pray for our law enforcement personnel and firefighters each and every day. We pray for our elected officials and their families so that they can make decisions that have a positive impact in the lives of those whom they serve. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Captain, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suárez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we take item four?
Item four, presentation of minister approval for January 21st, 2015, regular city commission meeting. Mayor Muñoz and Commissioner Suárez abstain.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you. And at this point, I would like to take out of order, new business, item 11A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, presentation of employee of the year 2014 awards. This is by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Why everybody so serious? This is a happy moment. Actually, this is actually the time where we recognize people for their work, for their standing work, and so we should have a smile on our face and let's welcome that. Can you read the first item, please?
Yes. First item means the presentation of award to Blanca Varela Marquez, employee of the year 2014 from the community center department by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Can I have the department head, please, come up?
Of course.
Of course. You were hiding.
Marilyn Miraya, community center director. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the commissioners.
How are you?
Good morning. Having good afternoon, or evening? Oh, good evening.
That's it. That's your speech for the morning.
Yeah. We need a long speech, okay?
Oh goodness, you guys enjoy this. My name is Marilyn Miraya. I'm the director for the community center.
Morning.
I nominated Blanca Varela because Blanca is a loyal, honest, responsible person. She interacts with the seniors very well. She's well-liked in the center and that's why I nominated her the employee of the year for the West Miami Community Center. Blanca?
Thank you. Blanca?
She would like to say a few words, too.
Okay.
Blanquita.
You say she wants to say a few words first. Oh, okay. Blanca, please. You can be there. Okay, why don't we come forward, colleagues, to...
For the award.
It's so serious today. What's going on?
What's going on? Start the music. Somebody put the music on.
The first was... I brought my glasses.
We're gonna do this a little...
Employee of the year award 2014 presented to Blanca Varela Marquez, community center department, for your outstanding service in recognition of your commitment in improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations.
The next item, the next item is presentation of award to Rita Rodriguez, employee of the year for the finance and administration department, mayor and city commission. Rita!
Rita's got a long speech.
I, um, I'd like to take a moment before you read the plaque to tell you why I selected Rita Rodriguez as the employee of the year for 2014. Rita has a passion for the city of West Miami, the same passion that she had since day one of her employment with the city, which dates back to June 3rd, 1985. It's amazing. Her attendance record is impeccable and she's lost many opportunities to take time off work with pay because she loves this city and appreciates her job and her work and her peers. Secondly, she has a great desire to help people who call the city by providing them with detailed information, follow-up, and assist where possible. Some would call her personalized tactics, old school. I call it walking the extra mile. Rita has taken on new technology challenges with time with the online banking systems and the pay online system features that we've developed using the web, the city's website, and any work assigned to Rita is always accomplished above and beyond what is asked of her. Her work is always above satisfactory and it is for these and many other reasons and because Rita wants to work here another 30 years with Lieutenant Delgado. Miguel, sorry, you cannot have her. It is for this and many other reasons that Rita Rodriguez should be recognized for her love, passion, hard work, and loyal dedication to the city of West Miami. Rita, congratulations for a job well done.
May I, Mayor, have a question?
Thank you.
Question to her husband. What do you think? I see you happy. I see you very happy there.
Thank you.
Come on over for a picture, please.
Thank you.
Hey, I stood there for 42... Thirty more years.
Thirty more years, Miguel.
Behind every woman, there's a good man.
There you go. Employee of the year 2014 presented to Rita Rodriguez, finance and administration department, for your outstanding service and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations, Mayor Eduardo H. Muñoz and the West Miami City Commission. Congratulations to all of you and to you, computer me. And I do love this city. There's hardly any city like this one. And it's been a pleasure for me to work almost 30 years and I hope to stay another 30. Because I, uh, we're family and I feel good here. We have been through good and bad times. Do you see what he's saying?
You're welcome to join the center for...
Oh, yeah, well, that's... I'm already rating his face over there. But thank you, thank you all and Yoli for giving me the opportunity.
Smile, please.
We go to the next one. The next award is presentation of award to Sergeant Rafael Jimenez, employee of the year 2014 from the West Miami Police Department. Chief Andrew will talk about his nomination.
Thank you. Sergeant Jimenez is gonna complete 30 years of service with the police department this December. He's worked in practically every aspect in the police department during his tenure. He's closing his career in high fashion. We can, the captain, the lieutenant, and I can always count on Sergeant Jimenez when we give him a new task or when we ask questions of him. He runs a lot of our individual projects today. Very proud of him and he's very deserving of this award and I think this will probably be the last one you get, Ralph, before you leave in December. It's a pleasure.
Employee of the year award for 2014 presented to Sergeant Rafael E. Jimenez, Police Department, for your outstanding service and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations. The one way to meet the mayor and the West Miami City Commission, dated this fourth day of February...
Just like you. Just like you, Ralph. Just like you.
That's done by the chief and the public works director. Okay? The next award is the presentation of award to Rafael Monte Zeoca, employee of the year 2014 from Public Works Department. Juan Pena will talk about his nomination for this award. All dressed up.
Ralph is Mr. Casual. Ralph is, Ralph is one of our tenured employees. He has performed all of his duties assigned and receives minimal supervision for all his work. He was tasked with the repair of our water system leaks that have caused thousands of dollars in water loss and loss to our precious resource throughout the city. His efforts have been proven through a recent leak detection report showing minimal loss at this time. As you all know, our system is over 70 years old and no matter what time of the night, what time of the day, Ralph is called, he's out here and he puts the sinking ship back together. Ralph has always exemplified in the work that he does and you could always count on him to take care of whatever problem is. Therefore, this year, I've nominated Ralph as the employee of the year for 2014.
Employee of the year 2014 presented to Rafael Monte Zeoca, Public Works Department, for your outstanding service and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations. Mayor.
Ralph is joined this evening by his sister, who's also a part of our West Miami family. Gina, please come up. His brother-in-law, Jerry, and his girlfriend, please come up and join Ralph. There you go. The next award is the presentation of award to Mercedes Soler, employee of the year 2014 from the Public Works Department Administrative Support Staff. Congratulations, Mercy. Mr. Pena, can we talk about the nomination?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Mercy has shown great effort and attitude in carrying out the work of this department this year, or last year. She has performed all her duties assigned to her and receives again minimal supervision for her work duties. Mercy was challenged with the city developing our new building department and ensuring a smooth transition from a big county government like Miami-Dade County system to our little city system. The accomplishment by no stretch of the imagination was an easy task, nor has any other addition of service has been impactful, so impactful to the city and its residents. There is no greater service this year that has proven this beneficial to the property owners of the city of West Miami. I receive weekly praises from professionals, contractors, property owners alike, for the efficient and complete service that Mercy delivers every day of the week. She has truly taken the coordination of the different levels of the responsibility that the issuance of a building permit entails in the building department. And for that reason, Mercy's our...
The next presentation of award is to, awarded to Jessica Perez, employee of the year 2014, West Miami Recreation Department Administrative Support. Welcome, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jim Gaswicki, Recreation Director for City of West Miami, and I'm very proud to nominate Jessica Perez for the employee of the year for a second straight year. Jessica has helped me in such ways that I don't think anybody else in the department could when it comes to doing paperwork. She's picked up administrative procedures and she's been able to follow step-by-step some of the operations that we need to do, the office work, grant work, and administrative work, and she's picked it up. When I struggle with an employee, I throw everything I can and see what their limit is, and I still haven't found Jessica's limit. So, with that being said, this is the second year in a row that she deserves the award. She's an excellent employee. She's studying to be a pharmacist. I wish she could stay longer, but there'll be a day when we part ways, but until then, West Miami should be proud to have her as a recreation staff. Thank you.
It says, employee of the year award 2014 presented to Jessica Perez, Recreation Department, for your outstanding service and in recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations, Eduardo H. Muñoz, Mayor, and West Miami City Commission, dated this fourth day of February 2015.
The next presentation, the next presentation is the mayor's award for excellence to the employee for 2014, to our city clerk, Agnery Gonzalez. Agnery?
By the way, I asked the manager to read what I wrote for Agnery, 'cause I wanna make sure that we don't forget it, so...
Um...
Then I'll...
All right.
Yeah, it got me nervous or something.
Yes.
Legal issue.
Legal, legal, the legal mind. I'm going to read some, some notes that I have been given by Mayor Muñoz for the record regarding Agnery Gonzalez and his selection for this evening. Agnery Gonzalez was hired by the City of West Miami in November 1996. She was employed as secretary for the Public Works Director at the time. She was later transferred to serve as a secretary to the city manager. In 2009, Agnery accepted the task while serving as secretary to the city manager to assist in the office of the city clerk where she was exposed to the day-to-day duties of the office. While assisting, the city manager was serving as ex-official clerk herself. In 2010, after the passing of the then-city clerk, Agnery accepted a temporary assignment as the, um, as a city clerk. On July 21st, 2010, Agnery was appointed by the mayor and city commission permanently to serve as a city clerk. She has accepted this assignment gracefully and efficiently. She has obtained her CMC certification through the Clerks Association. Agnery has conducted several elections and has worked through a charter review process that resulted in ballot questions in 2014, and she has done an outstanding job with the guidance from our city attorney and the city man, and working with the city manager's office. Each year, the office of the mayor recognizes, recognizes those who walk the extra mile to excel and to serve. This year, Agnery Gonzalez has earned the mayor's award for excellence for 2014. Congratulations. Congratulations. Mayor, if I may, before you read the plaque, I'd like to add something to that. I had the privilege of inviting Agnery to apply for a job in the city of West Miami back in 1996. From the moment I met her, I knew that she was a shining star and a rising star within the city of West Miami. We've all gone through a lot of growing pains, but Agnery has always shown and demonstrated a passion for her work, a passion for the city, a passion to grow professionally and academically, and I could not think of a better person and more deserving of this award because this lady came to work for the city of West Miami without knowing English, folks, in 1996. We threw her back in Public Works where she responded to Mr. George Kulik and God rest his soul, George spoke English only, so she was forced, because of the need to work and the desire to move up and get ahead in life, she was forced to learn the language, okay? And she quickly mastered her skills, the language, and it just doesn't stop. Agnery tries to do the very best each and every day, and she's an outstanding employee. Mayor, congratulations to you on your selection.
And before, and before, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and before you say anything else, let me...
I forgot about the attorney.
Put my two cents over there. I call the city of West Miami on a daily basis, perhaps sometime three, four, five times a day.
Or more.
Or more. I always have some sort of issues, some problems to resolve and so on and so forth, and I want to, to put on the record that after speaking to, to the manager and I have an opportunity to, to communicate with Agnery. Agnery is always ready, always listening, always able and willing to go, and is one of the best employees that I ever found. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, basically, I've, it's been a long speech. It's with great pleasure that I present the mayor's award of excellence to Agnery Gonzalez. The lady can come up.
Thank you. Agnery is joined, Agnery Gonzalez is joined this evening by her husband, Ivan, a former employee of the city of West Miami, and by her three sons, Odigo, Eric, and Ivancito, my future city clerk and training here, sitting next to me. And, and please join us in congratulating her son, Otto, on his birthday this evening, his 20th birthday. I want to say just a few words, if I may. Just, just a few words while Juan erases some pictures. Ivan, guys, go up with your mom. No, no, I want to take a picture first with the commission and then with you and then with Otto and Eric and my adopted son, Iran, and then so... I just want to say thank you to this commission because they've supported me throughout the whole process. Ivan? Throughout the whole process of obtaining my CMC certification, which stands for Certified Municipal Clerk, I'm wearing my pin proudly because I recently obtained that certification. Also, I want to thank Yoli and, and Pepe, the city manager and the city attorney. Because of, because of her, I'm here, because of Pepe's patience, probably the city clerk. I always have something to learn from him. I always admire every day Yoli's patience and, and guidance in my, during the performance of my duties. And in this changing world and so many demands, I, I always try to, to be the best and, and to work for my city, which I love and have, and have a passion for. So, I thank this commission because, because of you, I'm the city clerk, because you've supported me throughout the whole process, and so thank you. Thank you again. Ivan, Otto, Eric, Ivancito, and her steps... Yes. This is Otto's friend and I... The grand... Mira, mira. 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 Mira, mira.
Otra. Si yo quedo bien, no, no. Can we go? En unos minutos. Si, ya, si.
Let's take a five-minute break, please.
Okay, welcome back. At this time, I would like to go back to the order of the agenda, and that will be item number five.
That would be Report of the City Manager. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, I apologize, I do not have a written report, but as you know by my email, the Arts Festival that is scheduled for Saturday, March 14th, is taking a great deal of my time, and I publicly want to thank the Mayor for his, obviously his enthusiasm and his leadership and for setting some parameters. I want to thank Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez, Commissioner Blanca, and Vice Mayor Blanis and Commissioner Suarez for being so patient and understanding with the issues and for helping out and giving us ideas to work with. So, thank you, and I know that we're going to pull it off and it's going to be a very nice event for the community. So, as we get closer to the call for artists deadline, I will give you a memo with a breakdown of the finances for the project, the corporate sponsorships, and again, the agenda, and I will be working closely with the Mayor and his committee to report back. That being said, I'd like to, for the record, advise you that we are trying to comply with a special license, a CPR license, that we have to fulfill as part of our documentation for the Children's Trust Grant application for our recreation center staff. Lieutenant Pete Delgado is actually going to be the CPR trainer next week. He will be actually administering the training so that we can get approval from the State of Florida Department of Children and Families so that we can move on with our Children's Trust Grant application and so that we can continue to run a Class 1 recreational after-school and summer camp program. The next item is an agenda item, so I will wait on that. The next item I wanted to let you know is that, as you know, the auditors have been at the City doing their field inspection for the last six weeks or so. They are ready to wrap up their field sampling of the documents for the City as part of their financial statement planning process. They're working now with grants before they make their exit. So, we suspect that the report will be made available to the Mayor first, and then to the City Commission publicly. We're shooting for the first meeting of April 2015, so we hope that they find everything in order, and I'm sure that they will. So, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, next item.
Report of the City Attorney. Members of the Commission, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission, as you may recall, in last Commission meeting, there was a mitigation action by the City in the Bertamati matter whereby the Commission, if you can recall, and I may refresh your recollection, this was a gentleman that had a breakage inside of the property, and there was a staggering bill, and the Commission sought to mitigate that expense, and we did not have a resolution, a formal resolution, however, there was an action by the Committee, by the Commission. Inasmuch as we have to, I've been advised by the Manager, we have to document this action to the auditors. I would suggest that at this point, you adopt the resolution that was taken in last Commission meeting, non protant datet. In other words, whatever action you take today would be to reaffirm the action that you took last Commission meeting. So, I suggest that there's a motion and approval of that resolution.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, next item. Item seven, Report of the City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just want to give the Commission an update on where we are with two of the projects that are hot in the hopper right now, about to break ground and start. First of all, the FDOT lab project that we have, the traffic calming, citywide traffic calming, as I mentioned in our last Commission meeting, I gave an update as to kind of the whole project, and finally, with these funds, we'll be able to finish our traffic calming program for the entire city. Where we are right now, at our last meeting, we had just received bids and we had reviewed them. At this point, we've already selected a low-bid contractor. Right now, we're pending the pre-bid meeting, pre-construction meeting, I'm sorry, to kick off the project, get concurrence from FDOT and get the project started. So, right now, we're anticipating breaking ground on the project, March 1st, through the end of this month, we'll finish out all the activities we have to do with FDOT to basically clear the way and have us start the project. So, the second project in the pipeline is the Public Works Facility. Where we are right now, we're still in the middle of procurement process. There was a two-week delay in the process just because really the timeframe that we had set for the design builders was not enough for them to put together a real quality package. This is a design-build project, so it's a little different than what we're typically used to. We're actually hiring a firm that's going to finish the design and then do the construction. So, it takes them a little longer to put together a proper proposal. So, most of the firms requested an extension to the time, and we granted a two-week extension. So, basically, right now, we're expecting bids March 2nd, right Juan?
Yes, sir.
March 2nd. It was originally February 16th, we pushed it to March 2nd, give them a little more time. So, at that point, we'll receive technical proposals that we'll grade, we give them actually a technical score, and then they'll actually provide a bid for the project, and it'll be what we call a best value. So, you get the highest qualified firm and the lowest price, and we have this little formula that'll basically give us the best value firm. So, at that point, we'll select a firm and we'll move forward with final design and move into construction. So, that'll occur sometime mid-March. We'll have a design builder onboard. There'll be a design process, probably three to six months of design and permitting, and at that point, we'll break ground and start construction. So, that's where we are in the two major projects. The other projects, I really don't have an update at this point. Those are still kind of progressing in the pipeline, so that's where we are. Thank you. Any questions?
Nope, not at this time.
Thank you.
Can I take... No, let's go back, let's keep the order of the agenda for the timing. Number eight.
Committee reports.
No report at this time. On my behalf, anybody else?
No.
Okay. Next item.
Report of the Mayor.
No report on my behalf.
Citizen presentation.
Anybody for citizen presentation?
No one has registered to present any issues to you as of this time.
Thank you. Next item, 10A.
10A, nomination of members to the Code Enforcement Board, Mayor and City Commission.
Do you remember whose turn?
Yes, it was Vice Mayor Blanis's turn to nominate an alternate to the Code Enforcement Board.
And I'm happy to inform that I reached out to Ralph De La Rosa, and he agreed to serve as an alternate, and he also expressed in the future of serving as a full-time Code Enforcement Board member. So, he definitely wants to get involved and help us out.
Okay.
So, I nominate Ralph De La Rosa.
Okay, excellent, excellent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we need any other nomination?
No.
Okay. Next item, that will be 10B.
10B, Report by the Office of City Manager Regarding the Credit Line for the Construction-Related Expenses of the Approved Public Works Zoning Building Department Building and Motor Pool Area, and Request for Authorization to Enter into Loan with Total Bank, City Manager.
Okay, at the last Commission meeting, unfortunately, after the Commission took a vote, I realized that this item required a four-fifth vote. Last year, during the second Commission meeting in April, and I believe it was April 17th from memory here, the Commission approved that my office to pursue a loan from Total Bank, which would be repaid by the City of West Miami through yearly payments appropriated in the various line items in the budget, half a million dollars for the construction of the Public Works Building, which we are going to match with some money that we have already set aside for the construction. Based on the construction estimates provided by our City Engineers, we have realized that $500,000 was a little conservative, and so I come back to you this evening to ask you to allow us to raise the $500,000 credit line application to $600,000 because the estimates for the construction were $667,000 based on the report provided to us and to you by TY Lynn International. That being said, if the bids come under the $600,000 plus the money that we have in the coffers, obviously, there's no need to draw from the credit line only what we will need based on the bids when we open that. So, I come to you to amend that previous authorization that you had provided to my office through a resolution, which would be your next item, to allow us to apply for a credit line. Basically, this is a construction loan. It has a maturity built in, a maturity factor built into it. It is a very attractive interest rate, and I reported on all the particulars, I don't know if you have any questions, at the last Commission meeting. It is a 12-month construction loan with an option to extend for an additional six months in the event that the construction is not completed within the 12-month window. The monthly interest rate only applies to that amount that we draw from the credit line, and we'll only pay interest on the monies that we use during the term of the construction. And then, we would convert that into a permanent 10-year loan or 119 monthly payments of principal and interest with a final principal amount plus accrued interest due at maturity. So, the loan payments are then, once you convert the actual loan into the permanent status, the loan payments are to be based on a 25-year amortization schedule. There are no prepayment penalty clauses, and it is our goal to be able to pay for this loan within a 10-year window of time so that we don't leave the city in debt for a long time to come. The construction period interest rate is 1% over the Wall Street Journal Prime, which is, the floor rate is at 4.75%. The permanent loan would then go to 1% over the Wall Street Journal Prime fixed for five years, and thereafter, the adjusted and fixed interest rate for the remaining five years will be whatever is prevailing based on the Wall Street Journal Prime rate plus 1%. We surveyed other banks in the community, and we found Total Bank to be the most attractive proposal. As you know, the City banks with Total Bank, and they have an excellent customer service policy. They have reduced their closing cost estimates and our application, they have, the application, the inception fee, if you want to call it that, they have reduced it from $3,000 to $1,500. So, they're helping the City in every way possible to make this happen. So, at the last Commission meeting, after you took a vote, we realized that the code requires a four-fifth vote, which we did not have at the time that the vote was taken. So, this is why the item is back here before you.
That will be under Section 3.06, Procedure Parent C, Parent 2. It says that a favorable vote of four-fifths of the City Council shall be required in the following instances, 1, 2, 3, it would be to borrow or to issue bonds or borrow money.
Commissioners, if you got a question?
This money is going to be used, we may call as a capital improvement, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we may use part of the impact fees to apply to this.
We already have, we have a reserve, we have what we call an accrual, which is a designated reserve, $150,000 reserved for this effort. The repayment of the balance of the work or the loan, if you want to call it that, or the outstanding debt will be paid in yearly allocations through the budget.
My question is, part of the impact fee can be used in this amortization?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion?
Not already the resolution.
No, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Can you read the resolution to record, please?
10C, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami Authorizing City Manager to Borrow the Sum of $600,000 from Total Bank for the Construction-Related Expenses Associated with the New Public Works Facility Building, Providing for Repayment Schedule, Providing for a Match from Reserves, Providing for Effective Date. Mayor and City Commission.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, item D.
Report by the Office of City Manager Regarding the City's Comprehensive Plan to Include Recommendation to Proceed, City Manager and Director of Planning and Zoning.
I will yield to Mr. Penna, but what we can tell you is, is that the City has been lagging because of financial predicaments in the past of addressing the issue of the comprehensive plan. We have gone out to Florida International University, whom we partnered with in the past for the completion of the report, and Mr. Penna will let you know what is entailed or what is involved here from a zoning standpoint so that we can move forward and present to you a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, actually, we have met with Dr. Ned Murray and Mr. Ralph Rosado from FIU, and we have discussed the City's year 2000 comp plan and 2005 evaluation appraisal report, and it is completely outdated. We're in 2015, and we should have done one in 2010. Therefore, we will review all the changes that have occurred since then as far as land use and other state requirements, and at the same time, we will create a new capital improvement table for future projects for the City, and also take into account your vision as to where you want to take the City forward. Dr. Ned Murray and Ralph Rosado are here, if you wish to ask them any questions. In the past, we used Florida International University in the 2000 and 2005 evaluation report, and once we presented that to the State of Florida and the South Florida Regional Planning Council and all the other agencies that are involved, we breezed through it at that time.
Dr. Murray and Mr. Rosado, welcome to the City of West Miami.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions, but I know you have a wealth of knowledge that you want to share with us, and that's why you're here.
Just to get you for the record, state your name and address on the mic for...
Sure, Ralph Rosado, 3472 Southwest 22nd Terrace, Miami, Florida.
Ned Murray, 1101 Southwest 17th Street, Boca Raton, Florida. Thank you, thank you.
In your packet, Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, there is a proposal provided to the City by Florida International University, and it talks about the center, and it talks about the tasks, obviously, the background of those involved if approved with our comprehensive plan review, and also the proposed scope of the work. It talks a little bit about the different, and we've asked them to identify those processes in tasks. And so, this is an involved, an involved project, but I believe they have a benefit, I guess you're not starting, you're not laying the groundwork because the groundwork was done, obviously, by your office, Dr. Murray, in the past, and so I think you'll have... office, Dr. Murray, in the past, and so, I think you'll have something to work with to get us where we need to be. The comp plan is a mandate that each city must follow, and it has to be approved by different regulatory agencies like the Miami-Dade County Public School Systems, the Regional Planning Council, Miami-Dade County Planning and Zoning and Advisory Boards and an array of other governmental entities. This is something that we have taken into account when budgeting. We have reserved and designated the money to take on this project, and we believe that FIU is probably the best partner that the city can find to basically take us where we need to be with... to be in good standing with the state of Florida. So, that being said, if you could maybe just briefly go over the tasks involved to sort of acquaint the commission with this.
Okay. You do it.
Thank you, city manager, Aguila. The good news this time around is that there was a major change to the legislation, chapter 163 in the 2011 legislation, that has made it much more efficient as far as the review process and the submission process. So, not only we working with the plan and an evaluation appraisal report that we've already done, working with you in the past, but we now have a review process both locally and at the state level that's going to be much more efficient. So, that's really... that's really good news for all. Even the folks at the state are very pleased with the fact that they don't have to go through all the data and all the analysis that we used to have to go through prior to 2011. So, that's really the good news. As Juan and the city manager had mentioned, the first thing we need to do is the evaluation appraisal report. That was done in 2005, as the city manager and Juan had mentioned. You're overdue, but you're on a new cycle, given the 2011 legislation, but you are on the clock. You have an evaluation appraisal report that's due by October 1st of this year, 2015. Obviously, our schedule here is really going to go after it. We're going to get that done very quickly. In fact, we think we can go through and review your comprehensive plan and come back with recommendations and updates within 45 days. So, we can move that process very quickly, and knowing that it's become much more efficient at the state level, and we've already talked to folks at the state, we think we can move this, you know, very quickly. But we'll come... so, we think we can do that very quickly. Once we do that, we'll have what we would anticipate to be some possible, what they refer to as evaluation appraisal report amendments, amendments that were... to the comprehensive plan itself. And once again, as Juan had mentioned, these are things that you want to see done, changes to the comp plan, the references, air-based amendments. We obviously also have to, which I didn't mention, there's been a number of changes to the statute over the years, and particularly, changes that have occurred since 2011. So, we have to update all those and include those in this package that we would send to the state. The state has a provision that once you submit your... what they're referring to the ear now is a letter of notification, and this letter of notification, which would come from the city and include your ear... your ear-based amendments and your updates, would have to all be done within one year. But given, I think, your timetable, you'd like to see this move quickly, not only our review, but then to expeditiously move forward on the amendments themselves, so you can go ahead and do some of the things that you want to do as a city. Once we do that, and somewhat concurrently, but it'll take a little bit longer, is to take that old 2000 plan and really update it, make it read a lot more readable, a lot more reader-friendly. I think eventually, we can get rid of all the cross... the cross-throughs and actually come up with a clean document that you can have. And we have a lot of flexibility now with that, and so, we can talk about that as far as how you'd like that plan to look, the formatting, what you'd like to emphasize. We can update a lot of your population and trend analysis. I think that's something we'd want to do, to bring it up to 2015 and beyond. So, these are all things we'll do at that stage of the game. But the first thing... the first stage of the process is to do the review, to do the evaluation appraisal report, come back to you, working with staff and working with the community as a whole, come back with recommendations as far as amendments to the comp plan and all the updates that are required by law, since the statute has been changed quite a bit. And then, with that, we'll send it off to the state, and then we can commence right away with actually going forward with those air-based amendments. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Any questions for...
Yeah, I want to make a comment about the... I remember years ago, a couple of years ago, when we started here to make some changes, and I start to talk about the revitalization of the commercial area and those things, and going the high possibilities of the buildings, and you was chairman of that group, that committee, and I remember that the comp plan was essential, was necessary. We even wait, you remember, Juan?
Yes, sir.
We waited for the comp plan to be finished in order to proceed to do those things. And I'm thinking now, the comp plan for the city is the right moment to do it, to complete it, because it's the way that we comply with the state. Now, many things are coming about there, about parks, recreation, people, number of residents, and all those things complying is what set the parameters for the city to go ahead. So, I think it's the right place, and I'm very happy that finally, we are in this stage that we can go ahead and do this.
By the way, folks, you have two individuals in front of you that are very humble, they don't like to talk about themselves, but you have a perfect combination from a planning point of view, from a practical point of view, of what, you know, land use is all about, what, you know, moving forward into the future and planning for the future of West Miami. And I'm very proud to have you, both you, Dr. Murray and Ralph Rosado. And like I said, it's a good combination, because we have the... the escolactival, and also, we have the practice, and they come hand in hand. Sometimes, we all about, you know, we're very book smart, and sometimes, we're very practical, but then, when the two come together, and I think I'm very, very happy to see you guys come together to the city of West Miami, and I know you're going to do great. There's only one thing I would like to ask, and you know that it's very important to involve young minds, students from the University of Houston... I mean, University of Florida, I went to University of Houston, that's why I said that. And one thing that I do, and I happen to be an architect, that I do in my practice is always keep young people, people that are currently going to school, involved, because it keeps you fresh, it keeps you alert, it keeps you... you know, they look at things differently, you know, and always looking for a better solution for the future. And we're building here, not only the present, but also the future for the city of West Miami for generations to come to enjoy what we have planned for them, you know. And I know that for the longest time, I mean, and I'm happy to sit in this war, especially with Vice Mayor and Commissioner Suárez, who, you know, one day, we were looking at, you know, how can we better the city of West Miami, and to see it happening, it is a great joy. And so, I will really enjoy working with you guys and into the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything that we need to do in the order of the agenda?
Um, yeah.
Vice Mayor.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to say the same thing. Having Mr. Rosado and Mr. Murray working together, it's evident that we are in very good hands, and I'm glad to have you, Ralph, and again, you, Mr. Dr. Murray.
Thank you very much.
Nitmar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I did not see the resolution added to the agenda, and I believe that Mr. Villalobos will insist that there is a resolution authorizing my office to enter into an agreement with Florida International University, waiving the bid requirement, because we are dealing with a public university. And so, I think that Mr. Villalobos would agree that a resolution is in order, accepting their proposal in an amount of $37,000 to accomplish this work. We do have the money. We took this into consideration, and we have, over the last two years, been building up a reserve account to basically be prepared to pay for the comprehensive plan update. And so, I would encourage you to adopt a resolution to enable this partnership to begin.
Okay.
And it would be a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the office of the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Florida International University for the purpose of completing, updating the city's 2010 comprehensive plan and the necessary arrangements to include the review of all zoning and land use ordinances in place.
Motion.
Providing for effective date.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you all.
Absolutely. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bye, Ralph. Thank you.
Mr. Rosado, I like the pink. I you have.
It goes with the last name.
Yeah.
That's right. Rosado.
Back to the...
Good night.
Good night. Back to the agenda. I think we still have one.
Item 11B.
11B.
Report of the office of city manager regarding the city's building official. City manager.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, you may recall that last year, time flies around here, we designated Frank Alonso with the approval of this commission to serve as the city's building official. Since then, our very capable engineer, Frank Alonso, has been licensed or permitted by the state of Florida, and I don't remember the name of the regulatory agencies because of all the acronyms and all the changes in the state. But there is a regulating agency in the state of Florida.
BCAIB.
I'm sorry?
BCAIB, which is the Building Code and Inspector's Board.
Okay, there we go. They gave you a temporary license for one year. Since then, Frank Alonso has taken on some educational courses, but has not been able to complete the process to get a certification that will be a permanent one. In doing this, we find that his temporary permit or license expires on February 11th, if I'm not mistaken?
February 9th.
February 9th, which is a few days from now. Frank has made arrangements to travel to Orlando to go before their board and ask for an extension of time because of the courses involved and the tests and the test materials that are involved with this license. It's taken, obviously, a toll on him and his professional life, and obviously, there is a cap of three years that this board can give him this temporary license. In the meantime, for us to be able to continue issuing building permits, we must have a building official that is certified. They do have someone onboard, and her name is, it's a lady engineer.
Surami Cabrera, who's currently our structural plans reviewer.
Surami Cabrera would be the individual that TY Lin, that Frank Alonso recommends, that we issue a temporary license or a temporary designation to the capacity of building officials so that we can meet the BORA standards and the state standards in terms of being able to continue processing building permits without interruption until Frank comes back with his license. The minute that he is granted the opportunity to continue serving as a building official through a license, then we would undesignate Miss Surami Cabrera and redesignate Frank Alonso as the city's building official. But I did recommend to him, so that he's not affected by this short window of time that he has through a one-year renewal, that he apply for the full extension that the state grants, which is a total of three years, with the condition that he continues to take the necessary courses until he is certified.
Motion. You need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. And by the way, Surami Cabrera, it's a very capable lady. I have met her, I have worked with her before, and good choice, by the way.
She's actually, she's the city manager, I mean, I'm sorry, city manager, the building official for Bell Harbor, I think.
Bell Harbor, yes.
So, if I might add, you know, the lapse in time, my license expires on the 9th. Really, the issue was that my license expired on the 9th, the board doesn't meet till the 11th. So, the state wouldn't give me... if my license was expired, the board couldn't extend my license, they would have to actually reissue the license. So, I have to go before the board and ask. So, there's actually a time lapse of about three days that my agenda item before the board is on the 12th. So, hopefully, everything goes well by the 12th. It'll be a three-day lapse where Surami will cover, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Frank, and good luck to you. So, I'll prepare that letter now that we have the blessing from the commission, and prepare that tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
We need to vote.
Yes, we did.
No, 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 we haven't voted.
No, we need to.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Motion and second.
Motion and second, but we have voted.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
Because, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Last item on your agenda, Mr. Murray.
Go to the order.
Good night.
I do, I do. Remind you that we have the art... the music and art festival, May 14, 2000.
March.
March, I'm sorry.
Saturday.
March. No, I scratched it over here. I wish it was May, so we had a little more time to plan it, but it is March. Okay? Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the record, report that the city hall will be closed on Monday, February 16th, in observance of President's Day. However, we will have garbage collection as customary, and of course, police services never interrupted.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you.